Now, not to call back to order. The Pasco County Board of County Commission meeting of October 24th, 2023. Please silence all electronic devices and your microphones. All right. Now it's time for public hearings. First one is P-52.
Yes, sir. It was advertised in the Tampa Bay Times on July 5th, 2023, and by affidavit of certified mailings and site postings.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item P-52, Peto's Planning and Development Department. Item P-52 is an ordinance amending the Pasco County Comprehensive Plan, providing for a comprehensive plan amendment to future land use map, map 2-15 and sheet 05 from res. One residential, one dwelling unit per gross acre to PD plan development approximately 188.7 acres of real property located east of US Highway 41, south of Seven Oak Trail, north of Alabama Road, and a tax amendment creating sub area policy flu 7.1.67, Seven Diamonds Commerce Park Road, or PD, excuse me, and a map amendment to the future land use map 2-9, adding sub area map 2-967, Seven Diamonds Commerce Park PD, and providing for additional tax amendments as necessary for internal consistency, providing for repealer severability and effective date. This comes, this is a request for continuance to the November 14, 2023, public hearing in Date City at 1:00 PM.
Okay. I need a motion.
Move to second.
Okay.
Roll call vote.
Roll call vote.
District 1 Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District 2 Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District 3 Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District 4 Commissioner Bradford.
Aye.
District 5 Chairman Mariano.
Okay. Motion passed. Move on to P-53.
Okay. Advertised in the Tampa Bay Times on October 4th, 2023, and by affidavit of certified mailings and site postings.
Item P-53 is an ordinance amending the Pasco County Comprehensive Plan, providing for a small scale comprehensive plan amendment to the future land use map, map 2-15 and sheet 03, from ROR Retail Office Residential to IL Industrial Light on approximately 10 acres of real property located on New York Avenue, and providing for additional tax amendments as necessary for internal consistency, providing for repealer severability and effective date. This is a request for a continuance to the December 5, 2023 Board of County Commissioners meeting at 1:30 PM here in Newport, Ritchie.
Move to continue.
Second.
Motion second. Roll call vote.
District 1 Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District 2 Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District 3 Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District 4 Commissioner Bradford.
Aye.
District 5 Chairman Mariano.
Okay. Motion passed. Move on to P-54.
P-54 was advertised in the Tampa Bay Times on September 6th, 2023, and by affidavit of certified mailings and site postings.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item P-54 is an ordinance amending the Pasco County Comprehensive Plan, providing for a small scale comprehensive plan amendment to the future land use map, map 2-15 and sheet 05, from ROR Retail Office Residential and AGR Agricultural Rural to IL Industrial Light on approximately 7.04 acres of real property located at the northwest intersection of US Highway 41 and Greenfield Road, and providing for additional tax amendments as necessary for internal consistency, providing for repealer severability and an effective date. This comes to you with a recommendation for approval. We have a presentation if you would care for one.
Okay. Anyone want a presentation on P-54?
Just a question, Chair.
Question.
Is the live local provision in this?
Yes, the live local provision is built into it.
Thank you.
Okay.
You do have two individuals signed up to speak.
We have two individuals for public comment. This is public comment times. Let them come and speak.
Would you like us to do a presentation or?
No.
So, the first signed up is actually a couple, Anne Marie and Norman Hetzler, followed by Matt Lackey. When you come to the podium, just name and address for the record.
Sure. Good afternoon. I'm Dr. Norman Hetzler, and I live at 13711 Lucier Lane, which is the 25 acres that looks directly at the area in question being rezoned. I ask that you disapprove this motion. I realize that part of the area is already zoned for industrial light, however, not the whole amount. We have animals, children, and I am now nine months into a house build that should be done in a month. My concern are basically threefold if you go industrial light. One is air pollution, which with light industrial will not be that big, noise pollution, but more importantly is light pollution. Even though a small section is already zoned industrial light, if it becomes a large enough one, let's say they go ahead and they put in storage place, which is, they can go 30 feet high with mercury vapor lights, that basically puts a huge amount of light pollution, not just on my property, but looking into the future for everyone along Greenfield Road and down Lucier Lane. There are some folks there who have smaller houses, but they have large amounts of land. As development goes north, that will become more and more valuable unless, for some reason, you have a lot of light pollution, things like that. Those folks could then sell their properties for a significant profit, which they would not quite be able to do if this went through. So, I am, once again, asking that you disapprove this amendment.
Okay.
Standing by for questions.
Well, I just wanted to say on the light pollution, we have an ordinance that requires the lights to shine down, that they can't have, you know, so they won't be shining up or out on other property, just down on their own property.
They shine down, but, I mean, they will come out.
This is public comment, so. Okay. Next person.
Okay, the next.
Thank you, sir.
I'm assuming Anne Marie Hetzler, I don't, I don't know if they were signed up together. So, then, following Anne Marie is Matt Lackey. Oh, Anne Marie? Sure.
Okay.
I just wanted to point out that we had just purchased this land last year, and this was our retirement home forever. So, this will, we feel, would reduce the value of our home. So, that's all.
Ms. Hetzler, just for the record, you have the same address as Mr. Hetzler, correct? Thank you. All right. Um, next, Matt Lackey.
Hi, Matthew Lackey. On a real estate address, 6241 Dainty Best Court, Land O' Lakes, Florida. I'm a Realtor. My wife is the one who helped the Hetzlers, who just spoke, to obtain the property, and we would also request that the motion be denied. This will reduce their property value, depending on what's going to be used here. And just a question, is it possible to, is there a presentation on what it will be used for, or is this just strictly to change it to light industrial?
This is a comprehensive plan amendment. So, it's not, this isn't, there's no detail. It's a, it's a change in the future land use classification for this land.
So, I would echo what Mr. Hetzler said, as far as requesting a denial.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Chair, there's a Gerald Spear signed up. He had P-54, and it looks like maybe he crossed it to P-56. So, if you want to speak to this item. Fifty-six. All right. I'll call your name then. Thank you so much, sir.
Thank you. Anyone else?
No one else has signed up.
Okay. Anybody in the audience wish to speak to this item? Okay.
Applicant's representative.
Yep. This is your item.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Barbara Willhite, 6327 Grand Boulevard, for the applicant.
Yeah, I gotta find that.
We have, it's actually four, as you heard from public comment, there's eight acres approximately included in this land use amendment, but really only four to be changed. It's currently, half the property is already light industrial. We just wanted to keep it all together. Half the property is being used for light industrial already. It's an area where you can see it's boarded by the train tracks railroad on our west. On our east is ROR, similar type uses. As far as the concerns of air pollution, noise, and light, all those things are specifically, you can't have any of those effects in light industrial. That's the difference between light industrial and heavy, is that light industrial, per se, says you're not going to have air pollution, noise, or light.
Right.
As Commissioner Starkey said, regarding light, there's ordinances, regarding noise, there's ordinances, and regarding air emissions, there's ordinances or state permits. So, I think it's an area that makes sense. It's an area that's already this type of node. It's got a boundary, a hard boundary at the, at the railroad tracks on the west, and we would ask for your support of both staff and planning commission's recommendations.
I have some questions.
Okay.
I see Crockett's, is Crockett's towing there now?
He has a facility to the east.
To the east.
Off, on 41.
Across the road.
Across the road, right?
Yeah.
Where is it? Do you have a map of it?
Yeah. When you look at the.
Because when I look, yeah, I want to see where, where it is.
Right there.
Okay, so they're already parking. Is it already being used for light industrial? Or is that, is the northern part already zoned?
The northern part is already light industrial. Four acres to the north.
And how long has that been light industrial?
I would have to go look at the zoning history.
Okay, and you're just wanting?
To add four acres to what's already being used as light industrial and zoned for light industrial.
Okay, so, I just want to say, just in case, there is no landscaping in front of this business that's existing. I don't know when that came in there. It has a chain link fence with barbed wire, which we don't allow on 41. So, I just want to be sure that if this is changed, that it's a lot more, looks a lot nicer than what that other part does, and I would wonder if the applicant would consider making that look better for the community. You know, driving down a road, seeing cars stowed like that with no landscaping, chain link, and barbed wire, it's not a welcoming community feel.
Yeah.
So, that's, that would be my request, and I think that would go a lot to help the neighbors with their, live nearby.
This is land use, we can come, when we come back with zoning, we can look at a special deed restriction to address that issue.
Well, I think that's already in our code, that you can't have chain link?
Agree, but if you want something more.
But I would be adding Greenfield to that, which is not in our deed restriction?
Okay, well, we could certainly, I promise to look at that and bring that forward with the zoning, and discuss it with your staff and the client.
Okay.
All right. Pleasure, board.
I'll make a motion to move a, move a, approve or move forward to make this a continuous, contiguous industrial light working area with the expectation that we'll have sufficient buffering to help the neighbors out and address their concerns. I think that's a happy medium there.
Mr. Chairman, the motion needs to be staff recommendation if, if you want to move it to IL. I understand the commissioner's direction to, to staff and to the applicant, but because this is a comprehensive plan amendment, it really should be make the change, make the change to the future land use to IL as delineated in your staff report.
I amend my motion to the staff recommendation, but note on the record my concerns and request.
Yeah, when we come in for the next.
Need a second.
Second.
You can discuss.
Discussion. When we come in for the next iteration of use on here, we're going to be looking for a wider buffer, a really nice buffer, and a different kind of fence, fencing all around.
Roll call vote.
District 1 Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District 2 Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District 3 Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District 4 Commissioner Bradford.
Aye.
District 5 Chairman Mariano.
Motion passed, four zero. Move on to P-55.
P-55 was advertised in the Tampa Bay Times on September 6th, 2023, and by affidavit of certified mailings and site postings.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item P-55 is an ordinance amending the Pasco County Comprehensive Plan, providing for a small scale comprehensive plan amendment to the future land use map, map 2-15 and sheet 04, from res. 1 residential, one dwelling unit per gross acre to comm. commercial on approximately 3.35 acres of real property located on the south side of Northern County Light, County Line Road at the southeast intersection of Long Lake Drive and County Line Road, and providing for additional tax amendments as necessary for internal consistency, providing for repealer severability and effective date. This comes with a recommendation to approve the comprehensive plan amendment and adopt the ordinance by roll call vote.
Okay.
And we have a presentation if needed.
Okay. You want to hear a presentation? Yes. Give us a presentation.
Oh, this one.
I put in Greenfield in it. L U C E R?
Good afternoon. Eve Rose Stevens, Planning and Development. Before you is PDD 240028, a small scale comprehensive plan amendment in the name of CPAS 2310, Dobbs County Line Road.
That might be Dobies.
Dobies. I apologize. Dobies? The property is located in the North Market area and rural character area 3. The proposal is to amend the future land use map 2-15 and sheet 4, from res. 1 residential, one dwelling unit per gross acre, to comm. commercial, to remedy a conflicting zoning and allow for general commercial uses on approximately 3.35 acres. More specifically, the property is located on the south side of Northern County Line Road at the southeast intersection of Long Lake Road and County Line Road. There is accompanying rezoning from C2, General Commercial District, specific use to C2, General Commercial District. This is the aerial. Context map. Without the needs. Okay. Obviously, the north of property is County Line Road, and then to.
Vertical property on, or the vertical line on the west side is.
The vertical property on the west side is Long Lake Drive. Access to the property is on Land Lake Drive. I apologize, Long Lake Drive. At the surrounding future land use, we've got ROR to the west, and to the north, we have Hernando County, and to the east, we have ROR in res. 3, and to the south, we have the res. 1. As mentioned before, existing future land use is res. 1. Our proposed future land use is commercial. Zoning C2, General Commercial District. The proposed amendment is consistent with the following comprehensive plan policies: Policy Flu 163, Transitional Land Uses; Policy Flu 164, Neighborhood Commercial Uses; Policy Flu 187, Economic Development; Policy Flu 1810, Preservation of Capacity for Employment Generating Uses; and Policy Flu 815, The North Market Area Establishments. With that, staff recommends that you find the proposed amendment consistent with the comprehensive plan and adopt by roll call vote.
Any questions?
There's no one signed up to speak.
No one signed up to speak for public comment. Anyone in the audience who want to speak to this item? Seeing no one.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
I got a motion and a second. By roll call vote.
District 1 Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District 2 Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District 3 Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District 4 Commissioner Bradford.
Aye.
District 5 Chairman Mariano.
Okay. Motion passes. Move on to P-56.
P-56 was advertised in the Tampa Bay Times on October 4th, 2023, and by affidavit of certified mailings and site postings.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. These next few items, P-56, P-57, P-58, P-59, and P-60, are going to be remedial action items to suffice Florida Department of Commerce submission requirements for adoption of comprehensive plan amendments. As such, these items, 56 through 60, are going to require that we follow a particular procedure at this moment.
Mr. Chairman, as Mr. Pito's just stated, this, we're going to sort of walk through this procedure, but the first thing I need, I would ask the board to suspend the board's procedural rule with regard to reconsideration.
Okay.
And I would need that motion.
I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to the county attorney's recommendation.
Second.
Motion second.
Roll.
Roll call vote.
All right. District 1 Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District 2 Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District 3 Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District 4 Commissioner Bradford.
Aye.
District 5 Chairman Mariano.
Okay. Motion passed.
So, the rule on reconsideration that you've just suspended is in place to make sure that the applicant who has received an approval has some certainty that they can move forward. In the cases of the following ordinances, these are not quasi judicial approvals, they are legislative approvals, but do not meet the subsequent meeting criteria of the rule that you just suspended. Given the Department of Commerce has indicated that they are not going to accept these ordinances for final review, and they will never become effective, we would ask that you reconsider P-56, oh, the, the original ordinance that adopted P-56, which is ordinance 23-20, the original ordinance that adopted P-57 for G Ranch, which is ordinance 32, or, I'm sorry, 23-22, the original ordinance that adopted the Saddle Brook Resort Future Land Use Map Amendment, which was ordinance 23-25, the original ordinance, which is 23-24 for the Chapter 5 text amendments, and the original ordinance number 23-26, which is P-60 SR52 Groves. Those five ordinances were the ones that the Department of Commerce did not process.
Can we take them all together?
We can take the, for reconsideration, you can take them all together.
Right.
I move to reconsider P-56, P-57, P-58, P-59, and P-60.
The ordinances that were originally adopted for those numbers, yes.
I'll second Commissioner Starkey's motion.
Okay, I got a motion and a second. A roll call vote.
District 1 Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District 2 Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District 3 Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District 4 Commissioner Bradford.
Aye.
District 5 Chairman Mariano.
Motion passed, four zero.
So, now you, that you've reconsidered, reconsidered the approvals that you granted for those five ordinances, you can take up the new adoption ordinances that are presented before you individually, as you would any other land use comprehensive land amendment ordinance, and so, Mr. Pito's will now call the, the numbers in, you'll take individual action on, on public hearings, an individual action, just like the original ordinances had never happened.
Okay. Would you like to read the?
At this point, we'll turn it over to the planning director.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item P-56 is an ordinance amending the Pasco County Comprehensive Plan, providing for a large scale comprehensive plan amendment to the future land use map, map 2-15 and sheet 19, from res. 9 residential, nine dwelling units per gross acre, and ROR retail office residential, to PD plan development on approximately 86.38 acres of real property located at the southwest corner of the intersection at State Road 54 and Gun Highway, and a tax amendment creating sub area policy flu 7.1.68, Odessa Town Center PD, and a map amendment to the future land use map, map 2-9, adding sub area map 2-968, Odessa Town Center PD, and providing for additional tax amendments as necessary for internal consistency, providing for repealer, repealer severability and effective date. This comes to you as a recommendation to rescind the adoption of ordinance number 2320 by motion, by roll call vote, and approve the proposed comprehensive plan amendment and adopt the ordinance, the new ordinance by roll call vote. It's important to note that we can do a presentation, but nothing has changed from when this was originally discussed.
And the rescission of the original ordinance is already built into your proposed ordinances. So, you would just take a motion to adopt the proposed ordinance, and it would have the effect of rescinding that previous ordinance.
Okay. Will we still take public comment?
Yes. Yep.
Okay. So, this is public hearing, we need to hear, anybody signed up for this item?
We have one individual, Mr. Gerald Spear. When you come to the podium, if you just name and address for the record, Mr. Spear.
Welcome. My name is Gerald Ray Spear. I live at 13232 Blitzfield Road, Odessa, Florida, Odessa Town Center. What I can, I meant to come here and ask for, please help. Where my property is, is going to be where the park is, Odessa Town Center. You know, you guys can come and buy my property. My wife has asthma really, really bad, and with their tearing down the flea market, the dirt is coming there across the street from me, from the, they, the storage place. It's, it's, I've been to the doctor with my wife twice this month for her asthma. She, you know, it's, it's really hard. I talked, when, at one of the meetings we went to, I, I, I forget the gentleman's name over here, and he, and I, and I said that what they were going to do is wait until everything was built up, and then come to me and offer me nothing for my property. He says, well, maybe they can make the developer come and take care of me first, and that way that couldn't happen. You know, I would really appreciate, I mean, I got my property for sale, I'm doing anything I can to get out of there.
Um, sir, can I speak to?
Go ahead.
I can't remember her name, but I think there's a Realtor that lives in your neighborhood called Mary, Mary Ann, Mary?
I don't know.
Has she knocked on your door?
I don't know.
She has got a bunch of parcels combined together.
The problem is my property is, I've got the worst house in the best area, or going to be the best area.
It doesn't quite work like that, and if you want someone to meet with you after.
Well, I have it under a Realtor right now. I, I would, I would listen, I would do what you're saying. I'd do anything you say, but until next April, I have it with a Realtor. But if I knew that the developer come to me, where I knew, like, see, I, I can't plan for nothing. I can't, since I don't know when I'm going to get my property, I can't go look at other places to look, look for property. I can't do nothing. I put my property at for sale, but nobody in the county, developer, they said, in the, one of the things that you guys said, that you would help the people that worked in there find places.
Can you tell me your address, and then we'll talk later?
Yes, ma'am. 13232 Blitzfield Road. I'm, I'm the only house that's directly behind that new town center.
How big is your lot?
Huh?
How big is your lot?
Uh, one third of an acre.
Okay, I know where you are.
That's hurting it, too.
Yeah, you're between, um, other gentleman and lady. Well, it doesn't quite work that, that way, but.
I understand. I just come to ask for help, and please.
Yep. Okay, and what's, if you will, I'll have my.
I brought you a bunch of information last time.
Have my assistant come out, Jenny. Well, one of them's home today with a sick child, but we'll get your phone number again, and, and I'll meet with you privately. If you wait in the back, I'll have Jenny get it. I'll meet with him and help them. Yeah. Ralph's going to get Jenny, but I didn't want him to have to give his phone number out in public. Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
God bless y'all. Thank you.
Sir, there's no one else signed up.
No one else signed up. Anyone in the audience that didn't sign up that would like to speak to this item? Seeing no one. Pleasure, board.
Move to approve the five ordinances?
No, no, no.
No, no?
We're just doing one at a time.
Oh, one at a time? Okay. P-56.
Okay. Mr. Wait.
Second.
I got a motion and a second. Roll call vote.
District 1 Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District 2 Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District 3 Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District 4 Commissioner Bradford.
Aye.
District 5 Chairman Mariano.
Okay. Motion passed, four zero.
Okay, P-57 was advertised in the Tampa Bay Times, October 4th, 2023, and by affidavit of certified mailings and site postings.
Okay.
Item P-57 is an ordinance amending the Pasco County Comprehensive Plan, providing for a large scale comprehensive plan amendment to the future land use map, map 2-15 and sheet 5, 6, 12, and 13, from AGR Agricultural Rural and AG Agricultural to PD Plan Development on approximately 2,903 acres of real property located north of State Road 52, approximately 2.25 miles east of Land O' Lakes Boulevard, and a tax amendment creating sub area policy[1768.33] and a text amendment creating sub area policy flu seven dot one seventy four G Ranch PD, and a map amendment to the future land use map, two dash nine, adding sub area map, two dash nine seventy four G Ranch PD, and an amendment to the conservation element, map three dash four, Critical Linkages Map, providing for additional text amendments as necessary for internal consistency, providing for repealer severability and an effective date. And this comes to you with a recommendation to approve the proposed comprehensive plan amendment and adopt the ordinance by roll call vote.
Anyone sign up for this?
No one has signed up for this.
Move to approve P-
Wait, wait a minute. This is public, public comment times, anyone want to speak to this item in the audience? Seeing no one, we'll close public comment. Now, motion?
Move to approve P-57.
Second.
Got a motion second by roll call vote.
District One Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District Two Commissioner Waitman. District Three Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District Four Commissioner Bradford.
Aye.
District Five Chairman Mariano.
Okay, motion passed four zero. Move on to P-58.
P-58 was advertised in the Tampa Bay Times, October fourth, twenty twenty-three, and by affidavit, certified mailings and site postings.
Item P-58 is in ordinance amending the Pasco County Comprehensive Plan, providing for a large scale comprehensive plan amendment to the future land use map, map two dash fifteen and sheet twenty-two, from RES six residential six dwelling units per gross acre to PD Planned Development, on approximately four hundred twenty point three seven acres of real property located to the south of State Road fifty-four and east of Service Road, and a text amendment creating sub area policy flu seven dot one sixty-six Saddle Brook Resort PD, and a map amendment to the future land use map, two dash nine, adding sub area map, two dash nine sixty-six Saddle Brook Resort PD, and providing for additional text amendments as necessary for internal consistency, providing for repealer severability and an effective date. And this comes with a recommendation to approve the company, the proposed comprehensive plan amendment and adopt the ordinance by roll call vote.
Okay. We have anyone sign up for?
No, sir, no one has signed up for this item.
No one signed up, is anyone in the audience wish to speak to this item? Seeing no one.
I may, Barbara Willhite, sixty-three twenty-seven Grand Boulevard, Newport Richie. As you can imagine, this is a big deal for my client, who is spending, already spending millions and millions and millions, bringing forth the vision that they had told you about. So out of an abundance of caution, I wanted to put a couple of things in the record, exactly that were in the record before. The, our PowerPoint, as presented, it still has the same date on it, and the needs assessment, transportation needs assessment.
Move to receiving file.
And if you could also just incorporate all of the previous record materials from one five twenty-three, to seven twenty-three, four four twenty-three, and seven eleven twenty-three.
Need a second.
Second.
Got a motion second to receiving file, all those favor say aye.
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 Motion.
And I, I just want to apologize to everyone.
Do we have to roll call then?
Do you need a roll call for that, Jeff?
Okay, I need a roll call.
Did we take public comment? You, you did.
Yeah, I did.
Okay, that was Barbara. And under discussion, I'm just apologizing.
You're going to receive a file.
Oh, okay.
Okay, District One Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District Two Commissioner Waitman. District Three Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District Four Commissioner Bradford.
Aye.
District Five Chairman Mariano.
Okay, motion passed four zero. Okay.
So you needed approval of this?
Move to approve P-58.
Fifty-eight.
Second.
I got a motion second by roll call vote.
District One Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District Two Commissioner Waitman. District Three Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District Four Commissioner Bradford.
Aye.
District Five Chairman Mariano.
Motion passed four zero. Move on to P-59.
Okay, P-59 was advertised in the Tampa Bay Times on October fourth, twenty twenty-three.
Item P-59 is in ordinance amending the Pasco County Comprehensive Plan, providing for text amendments to Chapter Five Recreation and Open Space Element, the Glossary, and providing for additional text amendments as necessary for internal consistency, providing for repealer severability and an effective date. And this too comes with a recommendation to approve the proposed, adopt the ordinance by roll call vote.
No one signed up for this item?
This is public comment period, is anyone in the audience wish to speak to this item? No one has signed up? Seeing no one, we'll close public comment.
Move approval of P-59.
Second.
Yep, got a motion second by roll call vote.
District One Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District Two Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District Three Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District Four Commissioner Bradford.
Aye.
District Five Chairman Mariano.
Okay, motion passed four zero. P-60?
P-60 was advertised in the Tampa Bay Times, October fourth, twenty twenty-three, and by affidavit, certified mailings and site postings.
Item P-60 is in ordinance amending the Pasco County Comprehensive Plan, providing for a large scale comprehensive plan amendment to the future land use map, map two dash fifteen and sheet twelve, changing from IL Industrial Light and RES three residential three dwelling units per gross acre, to RES six residential six dwelling units per gross acre on approximately sixty-eight point two five acres of real property, located on the north side of State Road fifty-two, west of Kent Grove Drive, providing for additional text amendments as necessary for internal consistency, providing for repealer severability and an effective date. And this comes to you with a recommendation to approve the proposed comprehensive plan amendment and adopt the ordinance by roll call vote.
Okay, anyone signed up to speak to this item?
No one has signed up for this item.
No one signed up, is anyone in the audience wish to speak to this item? P-60. Seeing no one, we'll close public comment. Any questions from the board?
Nope.
Okay, need a motion.
Move to approve P-60.
Second.
Got a motion second by roll call vote.
District One Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District Two Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District Three Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District Four Commissioner Bradford.
Aye.
District Five Chairman Mariano.
Motion passed four zero. Move on to, Jeff, or, Mr. Stein, Snyder, would you do public hearings?
I will be glad to resume zoning procedures into the record. There are two rezoning agendas, regular and consent. Staff will present each application to the Board of County Commissioners. If staff or planning commission has recommended approval, and there is no opposition, the application will be considered by the board without further presentation. If staff or planning commission has recommended denial, or if there is opposition to the application, the applicant will be given five minutes for presentation, the opposition will be given three minutes for each individual, or five minutes for a group representative, and the applicant will be given three minutes for rebuttal. Any individual disagreeing with staff or planning commission recommendation, or anyone wishing to object to any condition of the rezoning, may at this time request that a petition be pulled from the consent agenda, in which case that application will be heard under the regular agenda later on during the meeting. Otherwise, all rezoning applications on the consent agenda will be approved by a single motion and vote. If you wish to speak to any petition, please give your name and address, and whether or not you've been sworn for the record. These are quasi judicial public hearings. The law in Florida is that mere public support or opposition of an application is insufficient for this board to take action. Please limit your comments to those criteria found within the Board's Land Development Code. Madam Clerk, would you like to swear those in that will be testifying?
So if you want to speak to any of the items remaining on the agenda, please stand and raise your right hand, so you can be sworn in. Do you swear affirm the testimony you are about to give as the truth shall help you, God? Thank you.
Okay. We will start with P-61.
P-61 was advertised by affidavit with certified mailings and site postings.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, Denise Hernandez, Planning and Development. Item P-61 is PDD twenty-four seven six four nine nine, it's a zoning amendment, in the name of Seven Diamonds Commerce Park, MPUD Seven Diamonds LLC. The request is to continue the item to the November fourteenth, Board of County, twenty twenty-three Board of County Commissioners Meeting at one thirty and date city.
Move to continue.
Second.
Got a motion second to continue to November fourteenth by roll call vote.
Is there, do you need to do public comment on this?
Oh, excuse me.
No, these are advertised continuances.
These are, okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Roll call vote, District One Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District Two Commissioner Waitman. District Three Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District Four Commissioner Bradford.
Aye.
District Five Chairman Mariano.
Motion passed four zero. Move to P-62.
P-62 was advertised in the Tampa Bay Times on July fifth, twenty twenty-three. Do you want me to read this note, Jeff? So the item was scheduled for the August twenty-second, twenty twenty-three Board Meeting, however, it was not heard. It was then placed on the September nineteenth, BCC, where it is continued to today.
Okay.
Item P-62 was advertised as a continuance, it's item PDD twenty-four seven six nine six, Greenfield Place West LLP, Greenfield Place West Rezoning. The request is to continue the item to the December fifth, twenty twenty-three, Board of County Commissioners Meeting at one thirty in Newport Richie.
Move through to continue.
Okay. Second.
Second.
Got a motion second to continue December fifth, please. By roll call vote.
Denise, it was December fifth?
December fifth, twenty twenty-three, at one thirty, Newport Richie.
Okay.
Okay, yeah.
Okay. District One Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District Two Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District Three Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District Four Commissioner Bradford.
Aye.
District Five Chairman Mariano.
Motion passed four zero. Move on to P-62?
Sixty-three.
Or that was sixty, sixty-three.
Sixty-three is advertised in the Tampa Bay Times on September sixth, twenty twenty-three.
Item P-63 is PDD twenty-four seven seven four two, and it's an advertised continuance, zoning amendment Beacon Woods East LLC, Loman Links Inc. The request is to continue the item to the December fifth, twenty twenty-three, Board of County Commissioners Meeting at one thirty in Newport Richie.
Move to continue.
I got a motion?
Second.
On second, by roll call vote.
District One Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District Two Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District Three Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District Four Commissioner Bradford.
Aye.
District Five Chairman Mariano.
Motion passed four zero. Move on to P-64.
P-64 was advertised in the Tampa Bay Times on June seventh, twenty twenty-three.
P-64 is PDD twenty-four CU zero six, it was an advertised continuance for a conditional use for construction, demolition, debris disposal, facility operating permit and conditional use amendment request for coastal landfill disposal of Florida. The request is to continue the item to a date uncertain.
Move to continue to a date uncertain.
Okay, you got a motion?
Don't move?
No.
Second.
Second.
Switching up, you did first half. I'll do second half.
Y'all gotta take turns on this.
I'm doing, I'll do second half, Starkey did first half.
All right, need, got a motion in a second by roll call vote.
District One Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District Two Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District Three Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District Four Commissioner Bradford.
Aye.
District Five Chairman Mariano.
Hey, you can make motions too over there.
Motion passed four zero. Move on to P-65.
P-65 was advertised in the Tampa Bay Times on September sixth, twenty twenty-three.
Item P-65 is PDD twenty-four seven six nine two, it's a zoning amendment in the name of Rogers Boring Inc. For a change in zoning from an AC agricultural district to an AR one agricultural residential district, comes to you with a recommendation of approval from Planning and Development Department and the Planning Commission.
Okay.
I'll move approval.
There's no one signed up for this item?
No one signed up?
There is not.
There's not anybody, this is a consent item. Is anyone in the audience wish to speak to this, against this item? Seeing no one, leave it on consent. Move on to P-65, uh, sixty-six.
P-66 was advertised in the Tampa Bay Times on August ninth, twenty twenty-three.
P-66 is PDD twenty-four seven seven two eights, a zoning amendment in the name of Catholic Charities Housing Inc., Catholic Charities Multi Family Zoning. It's for a change in zoning from an R one MH Single Family Mobile Home District to an MF one Multiple Family Medium Density District. Comes to you with a recommendation of approval from both the Planning, from both the Planning and Development Department and the Planning Commission.
Does anyone sign up to speak?
There is no one signed up for this item either.
Is anyone here to speak against this item? Seeing no one, leave it on consent. P-67?
P-67 was advertised in the Tampa Bay Times on August twenty-third, twenty twenty-three.
P-67 is PDD twenty-four seven six seven nine. On this one, there's a couple of housekeeping items. On the agenda memo, the request is, and I'll read it into record, sorry. It's a zoning amendment Schrader fifty-two CC MPUD Master Plan Unit Development, Mary Burke and Thomas Schrader, a rezoning from an R one Rural Density Residential District and AR Agricultural Residential District to an MPUD Master Plan Unit Development District to allow the development of six hundred and twenty-five multifamily units, and this is where we're adding, a minimum of one hundred and six thousand two hundred and eighty-six square feet of commercial uses on approximately fifty-seven point forty-nine acres. So that's being changed on the agenda memo. And then also the location of the project is being changed on the agenda memo. It inadvertently showed that's on the north side of County Road fifty-two, it's actually on the south side of County Road fifty-two. Those corrections will be sent to the Clerk's Office, and a corrected resolution has been sent to the Clerk's Office for the, for the board.
It was advertised correctly.
It, that's a really, really excellent question.
That's what attorneys do.
If my colleague Orlando Boris knows what the advertising stated, that would be fabulous. This is for sixty-seven. Full of public publication.
I'm on the spot.
You know what, I'm seeing a restriction here. May I? I have a question, I'm just seeing it right now, I'm sorry, because I had, just had a meeting with them, that says they're asking to not have to connect to the east and west. On the east, I think is a road, no, west is a road. But on the east is-
This is on fifty-two.
Yeah, but on the east is property that will be developed. So I'm trying to figure out why we wouldn't-
Ms. Burke's property is east, is like seventeen acres, and, and Schrader's property is forty acres.
Well-
Yeah, if you look at your-
After Planning Commission, they changed their plan to connect to the northeast. So they are connecting to the northeast.
Northeast.
To the vacant piece of property to the northeast, they are not-
Well, I know we talked about a trail, so there, there will be a road connecting to the-
There will be a roadway connection to the northeast, correct.
So does that need to be changed, because it says right here in the front?
Well, it says that they were originally requesting to not interconnect to the east, but that was their original request, but they've modified their request, and they are now connecting to the northeast.
It says south of State Road fifty-two. That, that's correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, it is, that's where the property is.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you so much.
I know the property.
For showing that.
No, I'm trying to see where that connects.
Was it advertised correctly?
It was advertised correctly for the record, yes, thank you so much. I, I do want to mention for the Commissioners as well, I know that's very important to you. Condition of Approval Number Seventy-four does talk about the Live Local Act. So that is included in the CCMPD, where they will be having commercial uses on there.
Can you just put up, just real quickly, where the, where the connection is going to be? Because I'm trying to see it, and I don't, I don't have a map that shows it.
The larger piece on the, on the west side is Tom Schrader's. The other one is Ms. Burke's.
Good afternoon, this is Orlando Boras. I believe that the question was where is going to be located the, the access point to the east?
Yes. Because it says in the front that they were requesting no inter, the applicant requests not to interconnect to the west and east sides of the property.
Which is right over here, and the connection in this, I mean, in question right now, it's this one over here. The one over here is going to be only for emergency access, and that's going to be also functional for pedestrian, bike, and golf carts.
Why would we have only one entrance for six hundred and twenty-eight people?
We have also-
Am I missing something?
This one over here, this one over here too, and then we have another-
No, no, well, that's the road. Okay, so where, how do the people get in and out of this property?
Good afternoon, Brad Tippin, Planning and Development. There are a number of access, we're not at the design stage yet on this, so we don't know exactly where they'll be, but there, the road that they're building, the north-south road there that you see on the west of the property, there will be access points there. There's likely, there's also an internal road that will run east-west on the south side of this property. That's the one that will go towards the actual city of San Antonio, and it stops there.
It's over there on the right.
That will be the emergency access, but the, the actual vehicular access is going to connect to that northeast piece. That's kind of that piece that's out in the middle of nowhere, that really needs the connections, it needs to have the golf carts and everything else to get in there, so.
Do you have a pointer to tell me what, are you talking about the arrow to the? Okay, so there's Oak Street, so it'll connect to-
Right there where my pointer is?
Yeah.
Is essentially where that northern connection will be. Again, we, or that northeastern connection. Again, we don't know exactly, because it hasn't been fully designed out yet. There's a wetland right there that we need to do the engineering, navigate around, different things like that. But there will be a connection in that direction. Everything else that is to the east is city of San Antonio. So we are trying to limit the amount of traffic into that area, because it's not designed really to handle it yet. But it is going to be an emergency type of access over there on that side.
On the east side?
On the east side.
So, so there'll be one access right now to the north on fifty-two for six hundred and twenty-eight people? And one, one when the Vision Road is built, so two?
Well, the, the Vision Road, yeah, the, this project will access the Vision Road, and from there they can go north or south.
So you got an exit in the, basically on the center on the fifty-two, and also the Vision Road, you have an exit there?
It isn't showing one, but.
Uh, I'm sorry.
I just want to make sure there's only, there's more than one in and out for six hundred and twenty-eight people.
Yes, we'll, we'll need to-
Besides an emergency. I'm talking two full in and outs.
Again, this hasn't been designed yet, so as part of the engineering design, they have requirements that they have to meet regarding the number of access points. So our code is pretty clear on that.
That's part of the conditions.
Yeah, it, that's, it's in the conditions of approval. It's also part of our, our traditional code, so it'll, it'll be there. Just, it's just not at this stage yet because they don't have a, a actual builder. So they don't have the design.
Okay. And we met on the trail, um, because there is a, there is a, a multi-use path and a mul, a wide trail that goes along with this property. And, um, and it will be built, uh-
Some belt trail or orange belt trail.
It's a, it's part of the, it is part of the Connected City Planned Trail Network, according to Terry Petos, what he showed me at lunch, uh, this morning.
Brad's back.
Uh, yes, uh, I can show that real quick on here, maybe if this works today. Down here along the south side, there is a trail that is identified in the Connected City Financial Plan, um, for a trail system. This property is going to, uh, have an east-west roadway right along their south boundary that is going to accommodate the carts and everything there as well, so.
Well, I'm talking about the north-south trail.
And the north-south one, uh, yes, will come, whoops, wrong button. What did it say? Uh, the north-south one will come somewhere right around the same location as this-
That wetland?
This, uh, along the edge of the wetland. Again, we haven't engineered it yet, but it'll be somewhere in that area, uh, going up into that, uh, northeast parcel to make sure that they have connection to a trail system also.
Okay, and then, and then the path, multi-use path goes on the Vision Road.
Right, within the Vision Road, within the right way.
Which is different than the trail.
Yes.
And Brad, the, the conditions of approval cover this, or is staff adding language for?
So this is actually, as being part of Connected City, they're required to do this.
Okay.
Uh, so we didn't, we didn't opt them out of that through the conditions of approval.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. All right, this consent item.
And trees in the street, which is going to be nice.
To public hearing, uh, is anyone here, anyone here to speak against this item? Seeing no one, we'll leave that on consent. Move on to, um, hmm? P sixty-eight? You got a question?
Uh, yeah, I'm going to leave sixty-seven on consent, but after we vote consent through, I'd like to have a conversation, uh, about this scenario.
Okay.
Just when we're done.
All right.
I do want to say for the record, because I'm not sure I said this, that P sixty-seven comes through with a recommendation of approval with conditions from the Planning and Development Department and the Planning Commission, as included in your agenda packet. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Not sure I got to there.
P sixty-eight?
P sixty-eight was advertised in the Tampa Bay Times, September sixth, twenty twenty-three.
P sixty-eight is PDD twenty-four CU zero-one. It's conditional use. Uh, District School Board of Pasco County, Vertex Development Verizon Wireless. It's for a one-hundred-and-fifty-four above-ground level close mount, monopole wireless communications facility in an MPUD to be located within the Angeline Academy of Innovation campus. Comes to you with a recommendation of approval with conditions from the Planning and Development Department and the Planning Commission.
Okay. Uh, is anyone here to speak to this item?
We have one individual, we have one individual signed up online.
To speak against item or?
It's not clear.
Not clear, so what do we do?
No, well, you'd have to-
Just pull it?
Uh, yeah, why don't, why don't we pull, pull sixty-eight and take a mic?
We'll pull sixty-eight and take, uh, take a motion in a second.
I'll move to approve P sixty-five, sixty, no.
The consent agenda with the exception of sixty-eight.
Yeah, those, the consent agenda with the exception of-
Sixty-nine.
Sixty-eight. Well, sixty-nine's not a consent.
It's not a consent item.
The consent agenda with the exception of P sixty-eight.
Okay.
Second.
Motion second, by roll call vote.
District one, Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District two, Commissioner Waitman. District three, Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District four, Commissioner Bradford.
Aye.
District five, Chairman Mariano.
Motion passed four zero. Now we'll move back to, uh, sixty-eight and take it.
You want to just hear what it, here, just, I would find out who it is on, on the web and, and see what their, whether it's-
Can we find that out if they're against this item or not?
So Robin Patel is signed up, Ms. Patel. Um, can you let us know if you are in opposition of this item?
Yes, I'm in opposition.
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay, so good afternoon. My name is Robin Patel. I'm a resident of Wicks, two zero nine one eight Lake Vienna Drive. Thank you for the opportunity to speak here about the cell phone tower plan for Angeline Academy of Innovation. I would like to request that the cell phone tower be located farther away from the school building and away from student areas. My concern is mainly related to the potential health risks on children caused by increased exposure to radio frequencies, RF radiation, from being near a cell phone tower for over six hours per day. School day for up to seven years at a grade six through twelve school. I'm particularly interested in this proposal because I have two children in the school district, one in elementary school and one currently at Angeline. I'm also interested because I'm a scientist. I have a PhD in biomedical sciences and while my expertise is not in wireless communications, I have about fifteen years' experience doing research on human health, disease, and biological systems. Over the past few days, I've learned following information from the school district about the planned tower. The planned site is located three hundred and sixty feet or about one hundred meters from the school. Directly face the student classroom areas. It should be noted that Angeline is a very tall, four-story building with student classrooms on all levels. Upper floor is significantly closer to the antennas compared to ground level. It is not currently known what type of many antennas will be placed on the tower, what type of signals they will transmit, or what the radiation pattern emitted from the tower will be. This is up to the cell phone barriers. The tower could house three equipment, five, three, both, or other types of equipment. In other words, the strength and type of radiation that would be coming from this tower is not known. It is known that RF radiation can have biological effects and that radiation exposure is frequent near the towers. Therefore, proper cell phone tower placement is necessary to limit possible health effects and liability. A review article fifty-two in the journal Environmental Research summarized current human and animal research and indicated that, and I quote, proximity to base stations correlates with dizziness, depression, and other neurobehavioral symptoms, as well as increased cancer risk. These effects may be cumulative. In the current research, cell towers would be cautiously placed five hundred meters or about a third of a mile away from schools, end quote. Again, the Angeline Tower is set to be about one hundred meters from student classrooms. Cell phone networks are new technology and health effects may not be known for decades. The American Cancer Society states on their website, quote, "Most expert organizations agree that more research is needed to help clarify this, especially for any possible long-term effects," end quote. Cell phone towers are a part of life and coverage is needed in the Angeline area, I agree. But we need to be thoughtful about where towers are placed to achieve that coverage. Until we are sure that there are no negative health effects on children's growing bodies, we should not be placing cell phone towers near student areas. Instead, place towers along roadways and fields, woods, or other unpopulated areas. As a parent, scientist, and a concerned community member, I ask that you-
Time's up. Yep.
She almost finished.
Okay, any discussion by the board?
I'd see if there's anybody in the audience that wishes to be-
Is there anybody in the audience wish to, uh, speak to this item? Seeing no one?
Well, I, yeah.
You want to speak to this item?
I'm here for the applicant.
Okay. Maybe you can answer some of the questions we heard, so.
Sure, Mary Solik, one twenty-one South Orange Avenue, Suite fifteen hundred, Orlando, Florida. I'm here on behalf of Vertex Development.
And were you sworn?
Yes, I was.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Where's your Elmo? You've got it.
Is that different than what's already up on the screen?
No, it's not. I pulled it from the site plan. I just highlighted the distance between the corner of the building and the tower location on the school campus. It is three hundred and eighty-nine feet away. I understand the sincerity of Ms. Patel's comments, but we meet all of the siding requirements that are set forth in your code. And, um, the, uh, Telecommunications Act has, uh, determined that the, that local governments are preempted on the issue of the health effects of the towers. The FCC regulates that, and you're, you're not allowed to, um, approve or deny or regulate the placement of towers based on their health effects, no matter how sincere Ms. Patel's comments may be. The FCC has just taken that away from you and they regulate it. Do you have any further questions for me?
Anyone? Any questions?
Well, I just want to say something to the school district.
Go ahead.
And I see Chris is sitting back there. You know, we keep, we keep hearing this and I think it's part of the 5G scare that's out there that people say they didn't test enough. It just, it would be a better for us if you would, when you start laying out your school sites, if you plan for your cell tower site. Like, it could have been on the other side of that pond, right? Or you just leave a little, leave a little pad far away from the building.
Yeah.
You know, just plan, just plan for the cell tower ahead of time.
Just something for the future.
Please.
Does he want to?
But we're preempted from the health part.
Yeah.
So there's-
Okay.
So I would move to approve.
All right, I got a motion?
I'll second.
In a second, by roll call vote.
District one, Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District two, Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District three, Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District four, Commissioner Bradford.
Nick has been right there.
District five, Chairman Mariano.
Okay, motion, motion approved three oh.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next item?
P sixty-nine.
Sixty-nine, yes, P sixty-nine.
P sixty-nine was advertised in the Tampa Bay Times, October fourth and October eleventh, twenty twenty-three.
Hi. Good afternoon. Uh, my name's Leanne McDonald with Real Property and Planning. Uh, the Real Property team has received a petition to vacate a utility and drainage easement filed by SH Seven LLC. The purpose of this vacation is to develop a new Culvers restaurant and retail business. As part of the approval site, the petitioner will relocate the drainage easement and provide, provide the county with a replacement access and drainage easement over the new pond. There were no objections to this petition and the team recommends approval.
Okay. Any discussion?
There's no one signed up for this item?
No one signed up? Is anyone in the audience wish to speak to this item?
Who doesn't want a Culvers?
Yeah. Seeing no one, we close public comment?
Move to approve P sixty-nine.
Second.
Got a motion in a second by roll call vote?
District one, Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District two, Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District three, Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District four, Commissioner Bradford.
Aye.
District five, Chairman Mariano.
Motion passed four zero.
I kind of have a question though.
Okay, a question.
After I went ahead and approved it. So we have new siding standards. Where's Terry? So will this Culvers be?
You didn't approve a Culvers. You vacated a utility easement.
But I'm given the opportunity to build a Culvers and I'm giving it, I can rescind it. There's a way I can take it back.
Not by yourself.
So Terry, Terry, well, don't we, I'm just asking.
All right, go ahead.
Well, will we, maybe by giving them this land, it makes it even easier to have the new siding, the better siding.
What's the Terry Petos?
Yeah, it's not really, it's, it's probably out of place. When they come in.
It'll look like the picture you showed or no?
We want the good siding for the Culvers, not the old bad siding for the Culvers. They haven't come in yet.
Brad Tippin, Planning Development. Yeah, this is one of those situations where the actual new design is better, I think, for everyone involved. Um, the county for the, uh, the swarm water and everything. It was just the easement was in an awkward location. Um, and there were, it was just making the property difficult to develop, so, uh, this is, I think, is a win-win for everybody.
Yeah, we need to look at that for that, um, old fire station again on Massachusetts.
Agreed.
Okay. Thank you. But he might have a question.
Oh, okay. Mr. Waitman?
Thank you, Chair. Back to P sixty, uh, seven, the Connected City project.
Yeah.
The remaining, my understanding is, and Mr. Two's here, is all the, the, uh, single-family, uh-
Entitlements?
Entitlements are gone.
Gone.
And what's left is just strictly multifamily.
Yeah.
I think it's time, and after talking with some of the stakeholders, that we take a look at the overlay and understand how much property is left. And then how many exact, what's exactly the multifamily entitlements that are remaining and if they're appropriate to be in those spaces where the land is left. I think because we're too far, we're so far down the line and talking to Mr. Two's here, and he may want to come up and speak, that we open this back up and take a look at it. And as we finish out this project, that we make sure that the balance is there and, uh, make sure we have the product that, that folks want and this one's sell and it's not oversaturated with rental in the area. So I, I thought it'd be a nice discussion to have and get some ex, you know, somebody who's had longstanding history and get his take on it and, uh, see what, what y'all think.
You know, I, I just had a little meeting with them quickly before because I just wanted confirmation on the, there was some confusion on that, on that trail and path. And they showed a conceptual design, and it's just very conceptual, of six hundred and twenty-eight multifamily units on there. But, and, and I've been asking this when I've been in meetings, and maybe you have too. Just because it's multifamily doesn't have, mean it has to be standard Brandon-style apartments. Multifamily is, is brownstones, duplexes, quadruplexes. I mean, they, they, they can be owned. They, you know, that, it's just a garden apartment, garden, I don't know, villas. There's so much product that's in multifamily that, I, in my opinion, we're not seeing. And, and better layouts, especially when you're in a, in an area that's supposed to be a village concept and walkable. And we're getting big parking lots with three-story, four-story apartment complexes and, and that's really old style and I just think we can do better. I think, were you trying to say something? Our develop, no, okay. Brad?
Uh, yeah, Brad Tippin, Planning and Development. Um, I was involved with Connected City from the beginning. I don't know if David Goldstein would like to speak to this piece as well, but, uh, the design of this, uh, it's not so much village-oriented, uh, like passing hills is. This is, this is a very, uh, specific design that is very high-density along I seventy-five in this area. The intent is vertical. There's the urban core. That intent is vertical. So multifamily units, uh, of a vertical nature, um, are, are really necessary here to achieve those densities and get that pattern. The lower-density piece is the piece over towards Curly Road as you go out towards VOPH, um, towards that more village concept area. Um, the, the intent was to blend it across and have, uh, the business core, the urban core, all of those pieces be the higher-density, higher-intensity areas. Uh, the second piece of that puzzle is that Connected City is, is its own, uh, uh, special dependent district. It's, it's, it's actually based on, uh, its own financial plan. And that financial plan requires these types of units and this level of density to actually be able to achieve the different things that it is obligated to pay for in the financial plan. So that's one of the hurdles that we would have to find a way to overcome, uh, to consider that. It's also a little bit of a design issue, uh, in that, uh, the intent is for this to be high-density. So if you start reducing that, doing things like duplexes, you lose a lot of that density. You start having some compatibility issues with other things that are around it in that area.
How many year, how old is this plant? When was this done? Six, eight years ago?
It started, we started talking through it in twenty fourteen, twenty seventeen, I believe was the approvals.
When?
Twenty seventeen.
A lot's changed.
Yeah, yeah, twenty seventeen.
Yeah, the original, the original Connected City, um-
Started when I came home, or-
Yeah.
Seven years ago.
That's, that's what the vision's supposed to look like? Is that right? That's the cover of, of the Connected City documents, comprehensive plan. Is that what we're getting?
Uh, can't quite see that from here, but the, the intention is there's-
I see vertical mixed use?
There's vertical mixed use. The urban core was supposed to be kind of like a mini downtown style with vertical, um, lots of different uses, and then business core stretching out from there. The multifamily is, is a necessary component to have the, the rooftops to be able to generate employees, both to work in the businesses and also to keep those businesses alive that are in there. Um, it's, it's a, it was a heavy lift as far as planning goes. There's a lot of different things that were involved and, and kind of making all those factors come together. Uh, but the most important consideration, I believe personally, is, is related to the financial plan, um, and, and the way that it is set up. That if we were to, uh, reduce this to allow more single-family units, uh, we would, we would reduce the density to such an extreme that it would be very difficult to meet the- we would reduce the density to such an extreme that it would be very difficult to meet the financial plan obligations.
Well, I'm more worried about the quality of life and the quality of the product that's there. We're a good portion of the way through this. I think, I think it would be wise that we take a look at the land that's left and understand the makeup of it. And if, what product is appropriate where within this, within this project to ensure that the quality of this, of this project doesn't erode away as we come across the finish line. I've heard from stakeholders in the private sector that probably think that might be a good idea to take a look at it. It can't hurt, it'll take time. But I think we, there's some learning lessons that can come out of this exercise and trust but verify, so.
Maybe we can have a regular item, discuss this one day.
We could, we could do it as a workshop. It has been a long time since Connected City came through.
Ten, seven years.
There's some new board members that might appreciate that. We could, we can go through it step by step and have a little bit more time to actually discuss it.
Yeah.
If everybody's okay with that, we can see about that.
Does any of the stakeholders care to have their thoughts on it, to see their side of it too?
Here's one. I haven't been on the pick on him in a long time. He calls himself retired.
Partially retired.
You don't often get the opportunity to.
Since the chairman ordered me to appear today and not to wear my golf shorts. Joel Two, land use consultant, of course, I, I worked with your staff and Mr. Gassaway at the outset, helping formulate.
Probably need your address.
Formulate the plan. Now, I'm still in Palm Harbor, Florida, on the lake if you need to come see me. I did have a one-on-one discussion with Mr. Waitman yesterday about this subject and just for what it's worth, I do think it's worth, at this point, if the commission can make time to have a work session and give the staff time. As I mentioned to the commissioner, you know, we, we adopt these plans and we all have a grand vision. But sometimes we run so fast that we never kind of stop and say, okay, how's it playing out? Where are we and does it need to be tweaked? Because when we obviously did this, we had the concepts and, and we've hit a home run in some areas with Pasco Town Center. What's coming at Wildcat Bells with Johns Hopkins and all those things. And I think you're going to see that downtown core and that density truly come to fruition along the interstate. But with that said, there were some broad-based assumptions made as to total units. And what part of that would make sense to be single family and what part of that was necessary at higher multifamily density to make the financial plan infrastructure work. And I don't want to downplay that financial plan infrastructure cost. So we do have to stay sensitive to the critical density necessary because the retail office doesn't pay for that. The only impact fees and the only thing you can credit gets infrastructure is residential. But with that said, I have had one or two parcels that I was contacted on who wanted to do single family and were told, no, the single family units have been exhausted. You can only do multifamily. And in that particular location, multifamily didn't seem to make a lot of sense. And in some cases, those owners actually elected not to opt in to Connected City. So that they could go outside of Connected City and do single family. And I don't think that's necessarily the result, you know, that we want to achieve. So my suggestion to the commissioner, and I think it would be a good idea, is if, whether it's staff or whether you engage a consultant, it shouldn't take much time. If someone could overlay the actual projects that are approved in Connected City with the density and unit mix that they've been awarded. I would encourage you to ask them to go ahead and also overlay the pending applications. Because in all fairness, as I discussed with Commissioner Waitman, you have quite a few pending applications that haven't made their way to you yet. But where those buyers, those developers either bought land or have contracted to buy land and spent a lot of money, they certainly should be entitled to rely upon that plan at the point they apply. So I think you need to kind of see where you are and, and that will tell you, I think, how many undeveloped vacant parcels that are a size that they likely will get developed. What do you have left? And how many multifamily units do you have left? And does it make sense, given where those locations are, should you consider reallocating some density to potential single family units? If there are locations where it makes sense and if you can be comfortable that you aren't jeopardizing your financial plan that relies on the density. So ground truthing this thing before you're finished is probably never a bad idea to see where we've come and where we're headed. So I, I support that. And I know Clark Hobbie's mentioned, I mean, he's also had a couple situations where they really wanted and probably needed to do single family, but they couldn't because units got absorbed. And in terms of single family versus multifamily in the financial plan, it, it has to do with traffic, obviously. But, you know, we have exchange matrix, matrix between single family and multifamily trips. I mean, all of that could probably be worked out without blowing up the road network, you know, which would be another concern. So anyway, for what it's worth, it's never a bad idea, I don't think, to review your plan and where are we? Ground truth it on the ground and see where, where have we actually gotten.
I'd, I'd like that, but I want to read something to all of you that I'm reading in policies. It says, ensure, ensure the economic resiliency and vitality of the Connected City overlay by providing housing of different types, density, sizes, costs and locations that accommodate the needs and preferences and financial capabilities of current and future households. And it says that it should be a goal to strive for livable mixed income neighborhoods throughout the Connected City overlay that collectively support a diversity of housing types and income levels by allowing a mix of housing types, rental and ownership options, including houses on smaller lots, small houses, duplexes, attached housing, accessory dwelling units, multi-housing, multi-dwelling housing or mixed use developments. I haven't, do we have any ADUs that have come through?
I'm actually, Brad Tippin, I'm actually not sure if we have any ADUs that have come in there. There is an allowance for ADUs. They come in as part of the building permit process, not necessarily the site plan review because we don't require any additional review for them. The, the mix of uses, I will say, I completely agree that we are looking for a mix of different types of residential housing there. There's obviously different types of multifamily by the definition that we use in, in Connected City. The only issue is that the single family detached home has spread fairly largely in that area. And with that amount of lower density that's there from the single family homes that were originally allowed, to then make an exchange becomes difficult to, to retain the ultimate density needed. The high density would have to be extra high to allow some of those mid densities to go a little bit further down. It's not something that we can achieve.
And that's because that's what pays for the roads to be built?
That pays for the roads, it pays for the infrastructure.
Yeah, well, I don't want to, I don't want to have us pay for that. But I just, as far as I'm concerned though, we've eaten up, well, I'd, I'd love to see what we've done. Because it seems like it's apartment after apartment after apartment. And have we already allotted all the apartments that need to be in Connected City and let's look at some other housing. I'm for the density. I don't want to say, because I, but, but there's other kinds of ways to get density.
We can, we can schedule something, a workshop or something to go into that in detail. We would need some time to put that together if the county is going to do that. We would probably need to have some authorization for a consultant because I don't, that's a, that's a little bit of a lift to do some of that work, as our team is already strained, as you're very well aware. But we could certainly put some of that together. We can have some of the folks that were involved in it to, to speak to it and discuss some of the issues.
We'll give you time, a couple of weeks.
Are you saying you want to stop accepting?
Tomorrow by lunch.
Did you want to stop accepting applications while we go through this or do we want the applications to continue while we're looking at what we've done?
Oh, I, I don't want to stop things. I want to keep moving.
Okay.
You can't be stopping these. When you have a moratorium, you're only, the reason you're having a moratorium is because you can't decide what to do. I think we can decide what to do.
Okay.
But go ahead.
This, I think, is more of a tweak than, than a massive overhaul of something going wrong. It's clearly not something going wrong, but we can certainly look at that. I appreciate the commissioner's comments we can, we can consider.
I'd like to find ways to get more ADUs in there.
I had something to say.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, just to, just to go with the scheduling thing. We have a board meeting in January, I'm sorry, in November as well as December. We have workshops on the new schedule starting in January. We were going to have budget as one of those items. We would like to discuss the Connected City at that point in time.
Right, that'd be good.
That may be with the financial plan. It might be a good time to have everybody in similar mindset.
We'd have to see a map of what we've done too.
Yeah, we're going to have to put that together.
Yeah, wouldn't take long.
We don't have those cool tools like that. We'll have somebody figure that out for us, but we can drop something together.
Right, okay. All right. What else we're doing here? Okay, that's our last item. Now we'll go to the ordinary business. Mr. Waitman?
Thank you Chair.
You got two minutes.
Two items. So I have, there's a map. Goldstein's on deck here. David Goldstein's on deck. So we have two.
Putting him on deck.
We have, we have two new live local sites that have come to life in Pasco. And I want to show you on a map and we'll start.
Let's see all of them.
They're both on commercially zoned sites and it's a perfect time to bring this up because we're going to, Pasco's going to lead the charge on this conversation in the tri-county commission meeting. And we're moving into our legislative session. So this site here is at Curly Road and State Road fifty four. So if you're coming south on Curly, Curly to fifty four, it's on the west side of the road here. And it's twenty-five acres.
On the right side.
On the right side, thank you, Chair Oakley. It's on the, the right side of the road. You're coming south. It's twenty-five acres and the proposal's in for some three hundred plus units. This site has been designated for commercial. And when you look at the traffic flow on this stretch of fifty-four, it's already a bit clunky. It's completely inappropriate. And I, I'm just vehemently opposed to this. I know we're handcuffed in what we can do. And then the second site that's, that's come to life is at the corner, at the inner, at Old Pasco Road and overpass along I seventy-five, primetime commercial, which could potentially would be fantastic, light industrial, light industrial site. But we're unfortunately not going to get there.
Who owns that land, do you know?
It's a, it's a Clark Hobby move, work to get this zone to commercial, but it's an attorney out of Tampa who owns that, that primetime corner there.
I think it's in the name of Adrian Phillips and it's owned by Ron Noble, I believe, is their representative.
And so I learned about these last week and it was kind of the, the, this was what pushed me over the edge with this, with this bill. These two, these two sites. You know, these aren't partners in our plan. We plan a long time and we have good actors who want to put multifamily in that go through the process and proper planning and make investment. And this live local group that comes in, they're not good community partners. It's an abomination of what they're trying to do. It's killing our jobs. It's killing, this bill is killing Pasco County jobs. The live local bill is not healthy for our community. And especially when they're going after properties like the two we've just shown. And so David Goldstein and I went through this fire drill exercise and we got, you know, with stakeholders, you know, and talking with them of how can we figure this thing out without, you know, hurting the people who are following the rules, playing by the rules? And the news wasn't good of kind of when you hit that nuclear button. And I'll let David Goldstein explain that portion of it in, in his lawyer, lawyer way.
Well, I guess the question is, do you want to hit the nuclear button?
Well, that's, I don't.
Because.
I don't, but we need to know.
The nuclear button is the, is the M word. It's moratorium.
But, but explain why. We don't want to do that because it's not right to do to the folks who are playing by the rules. But this is, we're literally stuck in a corner. And there is one option on the table, which is an unhealthy option for us to combat this.
The Live Local Act basically requires that you bypass zoning and land use and that's your problem. So really the only thing that you can control under the Live Local Act is land development regulations. The Live Local Act also says that these projects get the benefit of whatever the multifamily regulations are countywide. So unless you go in and amend your multifamily regulations countywide to address these kind of projects, you're kind of stuck. Now, you could legally do a moratorium, at least I believe you can, legally do a moratorium while you develop those land development regulations, similar to what you did for mini warehouse and maybe some other uses. That could be done, but the problem with that is that you are potentially affecting other projects that did play by the rules to Commissioner Waitman's point, where they went through the proper zoning, land use, and they just need to get their site plans approved. I can't think of a good way to distinguish those projects. Because you have to go in and amend your land development regulations that apply to all multifamily. So now you probably could exempt projects that are not what that we call multifamily, but aren't really multifamily, like platted townhomes. I think we're probably the only ones in the state to consider that to be a multifamily product. I don't think the state considers platted townhomes to be multifamily. You probably could exempt those. You might be able to exempt vertical mixed use, but if you're talking about standard multifamily development, it would be very difficult for us to distinguish those standard multifamily projects from live local projects.
Okay, so you're saying like we did the apartment moratorium in Commissioner Moore's district, we could do a boundary of moratorium again?
You could do that, but it would, it would likely have to be countywide.
Well, you don't know where these are going to pop up. And I had great conversation with Ms. Willhite from the stakeholder side. This, this is so troublesome. Because you got these bad, I'll call them bad actors that come in and hurt people who've strategically made their investment, taking time to go through the process, do proper planning. I mean, we're about to spend a pile of money widening Old Pasco Road finally. And in that plan to widen that road and just north of it, schools and everything else is not, that was planned to be a commercial hub or potential industrial hub job creating right there on that brand new interchange. But instead it's potentially thirty-three acres of some sort of vertical multifamily, not mixed use.
Off the tax rolls as well.
Yes, forty percent discount for thirty-plus years.
They, they would be eligible for the tax exemption as well.
And we can't charge, can we charge the mobility fees to help widen the road and all that?
We can charge all of our standard impact fees and we've, we've talked to each of you individually about changing our impact fee regulations to that we are not incentivizing live local projects.
Yeah.
But the bottom line, I mean, this may be the worst example, this particular site, because there was actually a subarray policy imposed by the board saying that there shall not be residential uses on this site.
And is that, that can't be our way out?
The problem is it's in the con plan and the legislature came in and said, you ignore the con plan, you ignore zoning. This is why when the new ones come in, we have them, the landowner agree to restrict the property. But this was before we did that. We zoned this property for commercial office, light industrial and hotel before the local occurred. And that's what we thought would occur here.
So how many parcels do we have that are at risk like this? And do we need to look at them?
We have a lot of.
Well, do we need to pre, go back and do something to those?
I mean, I guess you could in theory go in and change the zoning of them.
Yeah.
What would you change it to is the problem?
Something that, that when they came back to do what we want them to do, we could put the deed restriction on them. I, I, I mean, what else, what else are we going to do?
The only thing I think you could change it to that might be safe from live local is maybe P O one and P O two. Because live local only applies to commercial, industrial and mixed use. So I think, but.
Whatever we change it to, we would let the landowner know, I don't know if this is good to say, let the landowner know, if you want to come back and do something that we want, we would put that restriction on you voluntarily, that you can't do that.
Downzoning property. That's what, that's what you're doing.
Well, that, is that better than this?
So County Attorney's correct. The problem is, is that when you change C two to office, they're going to argue that you've taken away their, involuntarily taking away their right to commercial.
Yep.
Are you talking about the landowner?
Yes.
Well, I'm telling you to, that we will tell them, come back in and we will approve it with, with conditions that it can't be a live local.
Like ideally.
Why not?
This would be fantastic, light industrial right here. This would be a fantastic site.
It'd be easier for me to defend a moratorium than what you're talking about. I'm just being honest.
But how, how long can we have a moratorium for?
You can't have a moratorium for more than a year.
Oh, and that gives us time for the legislature to fix their method?
They start in January.
To be clear, to be clear, the moratorium's purpose would be to develop regulations applicable to multifamily projects. Okay. You could do a moratorium for that purpose. That was the main reason you did a moratorium for mini warehouse was to develop regulations applicable to. So for example, you might want to impose setback requirements on these projects. You may want to impose additional landscaping requirements. You may want to impose additional architectural requirements. You may want to impose additional architectural requirements. If you recall, you all directed staff to do regulations on build the rent, which hasn't been done yet. So you could use that time to develop those regulations. So there's a way to defend a moratorium to develop regulations applicable to this project. This is why I started the question with a question though, which is, I don't know if you want to exercise that quote, "nuclear option." Because it's going to affect projects that are not live local projects.
And it's important here, so this is our side.
It affects all of them.
So this is, we're here in the county's.
Or nuclear.
Side. And there's a lot of business and investment that, that's made their way through the process that I don't want to see negatively impact. That's when talking to stakeholders is, is very important. And if, I'd invite Ms. Willhite, if she has any comments to share. You don't have to, I'm not putting you on the spot. But both sides of this argument are, are very, are valid. Like this particular site right here, talking with Mr. Hobby, trying to loosely negotiate with this landowner to not do live local and essentially came back with live local is what it's going to be. And that just, that, that was, that is what pushed me over. That is not, that is horrible. And then over at Curly and 54, that whole congested area was going in, literally across the street.
But this is worse. This is one of our most valuable corners in the county.
I agree.
I, and I hope the legislators like what they did. But I don't know, you really shouldn't put it on the bad actors of people out there. They're doing what the law allows and that, and, and I, I'm sorry, that's a bad law for us.
Does that, does that type of live local, does that bring a lot of money from they sell it like that? Is it because there's no tax in the future on it, so they get more money when they buy it?
My understanding is, I mean, I believe they're trying to sell it because there's a market for multifamily.
Right.
They do have to restrict it to 120% of, of average median income, but.
Which is high.
But what Barbara will tell you is that those, those rents are pretty high.
It's 85,000 a year.
That's basically just market. I mean, I.
Yeah.
We have county employees that cannot afford 120% of AMI, just so we're clear. So this, it's not like it's low-income housing. This is almost market rate.
It's really not going to solve that issue of people needing to afford housing.
Provide the services. We can't figure out how to budget for police and fire and the services that they're going to provide. And I have the data here of what essentially, you know, what multifamily, the amount of calls that come out of a multifamily since 2020. And at least ones we can plan for, we can plan for, for sheriff's deputies and, and fire stations and, and fire personnel. But these things, they just pop up. Here we are and it's not, not in the plan. And they're dangerous for us, for our county. Anyway, Ms. Willhite, thank you.
Mr. Chair, just a second. Barbara Willhite, 6327 Grand Boulevard, Newport Beach, Florida, 34652. You know, I've been doing this all my life. Conversation about a big M moratorium kept me up all night. It is a nuclear option and I would ask you to explore all different options. I spent time on the phone with Mr. Goldstein going through the law and what would you have to do to effectuate a moratorium that would impact live local projects? And it's a moratorium on any construction plan submittal for any project properly approved and entitled. That's a huge M and it's probably an N because it's a nuclear M, NM. I'd ask you to explore other options.
Like what? You just went through the list?
It would just stop everybody in their tracks.
Suggest some. Suggest some.
Well, I'd be happy to. I've, I've had a few hours of, of discussion, but certainly could continue to have those discussions. But I can tell you that the only way you can effectuate a moratorium is by stopping everybody's projects, projects that are pending, they need site plan approval to close, all of those stop. And so you would, you'd really be throwing out all the.
You'd hurt a lot of people.
All the good actors. That's, this is their business, you know?
So we have talked to you individually about one.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Willhite.
A carrot approach, which is modifying our impact fee incentives so that they don't apply to these live local projects. And so they reward the good actors and effectively penalize the bad actors. But that's only a carrot, okay? That's not a stick. So I don't have a good stick to offer you because the legislature was so overbroad in the way they did this law, that it's very difficult for me to come up with a good stick to penalize just these projects without affecting other projects. I'm open to suggestions. I'm happy to, if anybody wants to give me something I can use, a magic bullet, I'm open to hearing any suggestions, but.
I mean, Industry Roundtable, I mean, the, the, the folks who are playing by the rules for the same, you know, same type of product, the, the two've got to come together and, and say, hey, we've got to talk about this. And it's important that we talk about this since Pasco's going to be discussing this. When's our meeting? November next month, real, real soon? That we're on the same page and understanding and can show these real-life challenges and how just detrimental to what our, 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 our view and our destiny is in the envision 2050 plan of growth, especially in the Wesley Chapel and this whole corridor right here. This is such an awesome opportunity in this 54 Old Pasco Road, Curly Road corridor to have really something great built. And then it get eaten up by discounted residential is just horrible, but we can't, it's, it's hard because I, I do not want to hurt the folks that have made the investment and are moving forward and have done it the right way. But it's important that we know, you know, our only, there's, there's one way out and it's a horrible way out. And that's the corner that all local, that's the position all local governments are put in. And that's wrong. And so if we can help Hillsborough understand and Pinellas understand, that gives us a stronger voice to go to top North Florida, I think, and say, please amend this bill. This is not, not healthy for us.
This is a great example to show them of the unintended bad consequences. And I am very curious to know if we have any other very important corners like this that are at jeopardy? Because I think we need to be proactive on those four corners, on those corners.
You know, on the east side of this, we're having all children's hospitals coming on the east side on the Spada property.
So I don't get every single, the problem is these don't go through the zoning process, so that I don't see every single one that comes in.
I'm not saying that is applying. I'm saying I want to get to them and get to those landowners or whatever before they apply and.
Well, I, so this is an example of one where it, we did talk to them before they applied. I want to be clear.
Talked to who, the landowner or the?
The, the landowner.
Yeah.
Okay, we talked to them before they applied for anything. I tried to dissuade them. I believe Mr. Pito's tried to dissuade them. Commissioner Waitman tried to stay, dissuade them. He talked to Clark Hobby, who I think tried to dissuade them. Every one of them, every one of them, when we asked them, they, they always said, we're invoking live local, we're invoking live local.
Even the seller?
It's a blunt force object, wham.
Who's, who's the seller?
It's, it's, I believe the landowner is Adrian Phillips, but it, their representative is Ron Noble. I don't know who the actual owner is. Mr. Hobby may know if he's still here.
No, he's not.
He's not.
Yeah, he left.
But the person that I spoke to was Ron Noble.
And Ron Noble is the attorney representing the seller?
I believe so. And I believe David Freeman is the principal representing the potential buyer who wants to develop multifamily.
Do we, and we don't know who that is?
I, I know who Mr. Freeman is.
Oh, who, who is the developer?
I believe Mr. Freeman is, is, is the developer.
That he's representing the developer?
I think he is the developer. He develops.
Who's Mr. Freeman?
David Freeman, he's developed other projects in Pasco County. I don't.
Okay, well, that, well, he's done. That's the little hammer.
No. Well, I mean, it should be.
That's not.
Bottom of the pile.
Commissioner Starkey, to your point.
Five years for a permit.
To your point, he's, he's a, he's doing what the law allows is the problem.
I know.
So, so I can, so we can change the incentives that we give to make sure they're not able to take advantage of them.
Well, that's step one.
But I don't, it's the stick part that I have a hard time with and, and like I said, if somebody's got an idea, I'm open to it.
Okay, and here's another one. If you didn't like that last one.
Yeah, no, didn't like that last one.
I was only joking. Mr. Steinsteiner said we paid an awful lot of money for the right-of-way.
Yes.
When we buy right-of-way, can we deed, can we deed restrict it to not go into live local?
Well, we bought the right-of-way. The right-of-way is ours now.
I know, I'm just saying, in the future, in the future, is that just another little layer of protection we can have?
When we bought this right-of-way, it was prior to live local.
I know that, but I'm saying now.
So we would have no way of knowing that, that this, that somebody would come in and preempt our ability to.
I, I understand that, but if we're doing it anywhere else.
Yes, but it's not, you have to understand the future projects aren't an issue anyway. Because if they're going through the zoning or land use process, Commissioner Waitman asked every single one of them, did you agree to, to restrict live local?
Is there anywhere that we are buying land to widen a road?
I'm sure there are areas where buying land to buy, to widen a road.
I am suggesting that we add a clause in there that it can't be used for live local. It's just another little.
The problem is, when you're in the eminent domain process, that will only drive the price, cost of your acquisition up. Now, you can, you can negotiate that as part of the sale, but it will, but it will increase your costs of purchasing the right-of-way. But what are we going to lose at a 40% discount for the next 30-plus years on top of the expense of providing services to them?
Well, just don't buy the road.
What juice is worth the squeeze? Is it a little bit upfront or the long-term?
Or forget it, they're not getting a widened road.
Yeah, we, we have to, Old Pasco has.
No, I mean, I mean.
Oh, yes, that's going to happen.
I'm saying in other places, I mean, that can't be.
I mean, what are we going to do at the intersection of Curly Road and 54 with 380 units on that corner now? It's already a, when you're going eastbound and you're trying to turn left to get on Curly and go north back home, or wherever folks are going, it's a cluster.
Yeah, it is.
And, and Curly in and of itself is a mess. And then, you know, 54 in that stretch is, is, is a bit of a mess, too. We have, you know.
There's another road that would actually take some of that traffic away from that.
Yeah, but it was never planned for another 380 units at two and a half people per unit. It's not, that whole intersection is just ripe for just being a cluster right there. And that's, it's, it's just appalling. And, and when you go and talk to the folks who, who are doing this and it's, it's, this is what we're doing. So I share this, that we all have an understanding, we're on the same page and that there's really one option and it's a, it's a very uncomfortable option. And it's, and Tallahassee's put local governments in this situation and it's, it's unfortunate.
Let's look at this and maybe next meeting, see if we can't bring some.
Well, we, before next meeting, we have our big meeting with all the county commissioners.
Oh, we did, yeah.
And this has got to be on the agenda for our presentation.
Yeah.
And this is such a prime example of what no county wants. No county in the state of Florida wants this.
The other thing you may, if, if you, I agree with David, the, the multifamily moratorium countywide is not only the nuclear option, but that's probably the most defensible option moving forward. But you can do lesser things. And based on the example here, we might be able to revitalize the old commercial node concept. And create a moratorium on nodes of the major roadways for multifamily if we're trying to encourage other things in those corridors. Just saying, I mean, you could, you'd be able to describe it to finite property. It wouldn't cover the entire county, but it would be those critical areas that you're describing as a, as a thought.
Right.
Yeah, but how quickly could we do that to defend this, say, this parcel, for example? Because you don't know when these are going to come in.
Same.
They're sporadic and there, there's no pattern.
So I think it would take our planning department to map out all of those areas. I don't know, I defer to Terry or Brad as to how long that would take them to map out those affected areas.
I mean, we could get started on something like that and probably have to report back. I don't know what size of a task that is, but if, if the board sees this as a priority, we can reshuffle priorities and even focus on this.
We need to get started on it sooner than later and.
When I, when I think of the investment that our citizens made at the I-75 overpass area, that we paid for that overpass, we're paying for the widening of Old Pasco Road. To have this kind of user come in is just a kick in the gut.
It's what put me, it, it put me, it pushed me. Let me ask Ms. Willhite. And others, I was just appalled.
I think we all need to be paying attention to it and next meeting, if we come up with some real great ideas, let's bring it forward. So rather than continue talking about it. We don't have that answer yet, so. Did you have something else?
No, thank you, Board members. I just wanted to share this and get our, get thinking and collectively try to figure this out on our side and with the stakeholders. And we'd be prepared to, when we go in our Tri-County Commission meeting in the upcoming legislative session, that we all be aligned on how we box this, this issue. So I, I appreciate your time.
Okay. Mr. Bradford, you have something for the board today?
I believe Commissioner Bradford had to drop off.
Yes, sir.
He's dropped off, okay.
There he is.
Oh, there he is. Okay, go ahead.
I have nothing today.
Okay, Gary, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Kabala?
Yeah, just real quick, thank you, sir. Number one, we had a successful Two Good Souls Shoes and Socks Drive event. You know, for, if you're not familiar with that, that's where we worked collaboratively across government here, Constitutional School Board and the Board to, to have shoes and socks donated. And this year, again, we, we broke records. And since 2016, I was going to say, we had almost 3,200 pairs of shoes and almost 6,000 pairs of socks donated, which brings us to over 18,000 pairs of shoes and almost 46,000 pairs of socks collected since 2016 on doing this. So I'd like to publicly thank Kathy Pearson, Paula Baraclato and the team on our side for working that, as well as collaboration between.
Eric, I had that film ready, we could show that.
Oh, were you going to show that one? I'll back off.
Show that.
I'm, I'm done talking about that.
I don't need you to.
What, what, what Two Good Souls?
Yeah.
The other thing.
Two Good Souls, but go ahead on some.
You may have noticed this out in the lobby, but the Pasco perspective, that is kind of our, our art program with our employees and their families. And so the art is actually starting to come in now and it'll, it'll be on display and there, there's going to be a reception, I think, coming, coming up soon. So look for that on your calendar. It's, I think, just a great way to celebrate the arts, but also the talents of our employees and their families. So I, I thank you. That's all.
Also to add to that, we have some artwork in the Boardroom A. There's some real nice paintings right in there that a person did in that, in that room. Do you have anything? Oh, who?
Attorney.
Oh, excuse me. Do you have anything, Jim?
I do. I had sent you all an email, I guess it was two weeks ago, that the.
Oh, yeah.
Case Hammond versus Pasco County, Hammond and the IFF versus Pasco County was decided by the Circuit Court Judge, not in our favor. I would not recommend appealing the, the decision.
No, I wouldn't.
I think we just.
Yeah, I agree with you.
It was a motion for summary judgment and we've lost.
Yep.
The other issue that I've, the other issue that is, I've been approached by the Supervisor of Elections, who indicated it's that time of year again. He's trying to locate board members willing to serve on the canvassing board for the 24 cycle.
I'm running, so.
You have the Presidential Preference Primary, then you have the August primaries, and then you have the, the September. And I, you know, while you all probably could be available for the Presidential Preference in February, it makes sense to have continuity through all of the three, the three elections, which sort of sets up Commissioner Waitman and Commissioner Bradford for that.
I've supported, I'm supporting people.
Okay.
I'm publicly supporting folks.
Yeah, the same issue. And I'm running.
Yeah, yeah. That only leaves Bradford.
So I have a conversation with Commissioner Bradford about whether or not that, that's a possibility and will, I will relay that to the Supervisor's office.
Tax collector's office, historically, Mr. Giordano has stepped in whenever there was a void, so he has experience. I don't know if that's an option, but just FYI.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's all, that's all.
That's it? That's it?
Yep.
Well, thank you for that.
I do not have anything. I do not have anything, thank you.
Just 'cause you came in after a half a day.
That's right.
Okay, you could add things. Could we show the Two Good Souls, that little clip we had for Pasco County?
$2.2 million?
I didn't mean to take away from administrators' talk, but this says it all. And it's, no, it's all good.
Thank you, we are here for our eighth, eighth tour, Two Good Souls. As you can see around here, we have thousands of shoes and socks, ready to be given to our students and our school system.
I was blown away to see the amount of shoes and the socks donated this year, just a true testament to how we can all come together and give back.
Like, middle school's hard, and even elementary school, if you don't have shoes and socks, you can get bullied, so I feel like it's really important for them to actually have shoes and socks.
As working for Pasco County Government, it's just been such a great opportunity for us to be able to give back, and rather than just focusing on the daily tasks of our jobs, we have something that we can engage in and just pour back into the community. So we've really enjoyed that. Thank you all for contributing, thank you all for being here.
The young girl in there is Lane Mennelson's daughter, a good friend of mine, and that's his older daughter. But she's always been a part of that giving shoes, but a great project. Thank you, everything Kathy, for all you do.
I wanted you to know that in our commission office on this side, we started being a little more aggressive, I don't know what the word is.
You bought some shoes?
Well, I've always bought shoes, but we, when the developers came into our office, we had flyers sitting on the table. And I know some attorneys bought shoes and donated, and I thank them for that. But the funniest one was, I got a call from Ed Briggs, from Pasco Builders, the Tampa Bay Builders Association, that the housing developer, oh, now I'm gonna forget the names. They're the ones out of Hernando that did that bill that we didn't like, that took away the right to put architectural restrictions. Highland Homes donated $2,000 worth of shoes and socks. And Ed and I had a very big laugh, and I'm very grateful that they did that. And I said, "Now, are they ugly shoes, or are they nice shoes?" But we all had a fun laugh over that, and I'm very grateful to them. I'll send them a personal note.
Right.
But next year, just let's keep from our office, make sure that we're asking the people that we do business with to donate to them.
That's a really good idea.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mike Bishop's term has expired on the Tourist Development Council, and I'd like the nomination to put him back on there.
So moved.
Second.
Absolutely.
And a motion second, all those vote, roll call vote?
Yes, sir. District One, Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District Two, Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District Three, Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District Four, Commissioner Bradford. District Five, Chairman Mariano.
Okay, motion passed. Our visit of the ribbon-cutting ceremony out at the Wesley Chapel area with St. Luke's, and there's showing a new building, we got some other pictures.
Earth pit.
Yep.
Pit, sir.
So, had a very, very good ribbon-cutting and...
Oh, Jim made it, wow.
Yep. The main man made it, Dr. Gill, he's a good friend, so, I was glad to see him there. Is there another picture, or is that it? Okay, thank you. All right, but that was grand, I mean, I told them there, and the fact of it is, we have, you know, two and three hospitals coming into Pasco right now, and then all children's hospital coming at Overpass, and then we have, I think the Kaufman Clinic out of Zephyr Hills there also in Wesley Chapel, and then also St. Luke's coming there with their care and I care and that. And we've gotten an area there that in Wesley Chapel is gonna be known for a lot of health issues, for hospitals and all, and a lot of competition. And that high competition is so great, the fact of it is, the benefactor of all that competition, of them, each of the hospitals and the clinics and all, trying to be the very best they can be, is gonna give our citizens the best service, best healthcare they could have. So we gotta be grateful for that. And also, we got Moffitt, you know, there, too, they're huge, but all this is competition. All of them are gonna try to be number one or the best. So it's great, the fact that they're there, and the citizens are gonna benefit from that, so... So next, I went to and spoke at the Zephyr Hills Rotary Noon Club on October 19th. And my phone won't quit ringing today. But, yeah, I spoke to the Rotary Club and explained some of that, those issues, and how everything's growing, and, you know, the new bakery coming in Zephyr Hills. I mean, it just keeps coming in District One and some, I mean, District Two's actually been growing for quite a while, and District One kinda sat there, but now we're starting to catch up. There's a lot of good things coming into East Pasco County. And it kinda changes the way we look at certain things, because it's moved so fast, so... But we got new roadworks and all that coming in for us, 98, 301, and then 98 course toward Polk County and all. I met some of the folks that are gonna start building that section, going from Clinton Avenue across and back to 98, all the way to the county line. They're there looking at it, because they're fixing to start that job, so, it's really important for our county. It'll bring a lot of traffic through our county, a lot of business out of the Lakucha area. That traffic will go different ways, because of all the roadwork network that we have in that area. So, it's very good that we have that. And the last thing, I met with Mr. Cabala, and I met with Eric, and we had a great meeting. But I want you to know our staff and Eric's department and Mr. Cabala, they're working for this, all of our employees, and I am very grateful and thankful for what they're doing, and I think they're doing a great job of that. I actually believe that you're gonna see some real changes in the future that's gonna make us that premier county that we're all striving to have, so... But thank you for y'all meeting with me, and we discussing different things, and the benefactor of all that's our employees and our staff. They do a great job, they're gonna be able to be better and better, so... But that's all I have, does anyone else have anything to say before we adjourn?
I do have a question, just on, and I've been looking at the Connected City Plan, and I know this was done before we were doing the traffic circles, and I see all kinds of intersections within Connected City. Are there, are they traffic circles, or are they lights?
Circles, on Curly.
I see one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. I see a lot of intersections, so, hopefully they're circles.
It was not, there's actually, the Master Broadway Plan has the intersection diagrams for traditional intersections. That is unfortunate, we didn't have a lot of support for the traffic circles until afterwards, which is when we were able to work on Curly Road and actually get some of that placed in there. It does not preclude people from doing those internal. We can also have some means to maybe do some of those on the roadways where it makes sense. Can't do them in all the intersections, just because of the size of the roads there. But where it makes sense, we can certainly consider that, work with applicants to do that as an option, if it's up they want, we don't have a way to mandate.
I feel that we should, because it keeps the traffic moving, and it's so much better for pedestrians.
But Curly itself does have quite a few circles also, but like Overpass couldn't necessarily be a circle, because it's...
Wherever we can, we should be doing that.
Crossing that road, yeah.
I think Rangeland wins the award for the most, Rangeland Boulevard.
Five.
But Curly's close, there's gonna be a few along that road over time. I think we believe we have three right now.
Mr. Waitman?
Thank you, Chair, yeah, to that point, whatever that intersection, Overpass right there by Epperson Lagoon, it's a pretty large intersection there. That's a pretty hairy crossing going east-west. There's currently, I don't think, a red light there at minimum.
Red light at Overpass, yes.
We need to, we need some, to take a look at that.
Yeah, I believe...
We get a lot of emails.
Yeah, we do, we do get a lot, and we've, there's warrants that we need to do, and different things that happen to kind of make sure that these are truly necessary lights, and if there's other options that we can use to try to control the traffic.
Well, the amount of golf cart traffic in the mornings, going eastbound, take kids to school, you've got a mix of commercial vehicle, residential traffic, parents on golf carts. I, it's cringe-worthy to drive that.
They're going in Watergrass?
Yes, to go to Watergrass.
That's all the parents that have been coming here.
Yeah, there's...
They're coming east...
But you gotta remember, Watergrass was not set up to be a golf cart community at all.
But they're coming from Epperson.
But, Epperson and all that was set up to be a golf cart community.
There's a portion of Epperson that's actually north of Watergrass on that side of Curly Road, where there's Charter School there now, that some of that golf cart traffic also tries to make that track as well.
Oh, I got you, yeah.
There's a few different ways. We're working with County Engineer and several other folks to look at Watergrass, the scenario there. Overpass has some restrictions as to what we can do with Overpass, but we're trying to kind of look at all of that. But there is, I believe they are looking at the signalization of that intersection, and I believe it is on the plans to be signaledized, it was just a matter of timing as to when.
It can't happen soon enough.
Yeah, I agree.
Yes.
But the nice thing about that, though, is the number of golf carts that are there. You know, the number of golf carts being used in these communities, that's what these communities were designed for, and they're actually playing out that way. So I think that's a good thing, too.
You know, you gotta remember, that Overpass coming through, we're a little bit, I think, late on getting that road on through to go to Kosik and 301, but the fact that all that traffic hit over there so quickly, some of those roads were not prepared to take it to handcart. And it's, I know we got a move, it's like a moving target, and it's moving in the right way, but it does take time to design and get things right. So we gotta remember that, our staff's working hard to do that. But we've had a lot of, like you said, we have a lot of emails and things of this nature that's coming into us all the time. I actually, I've seen engineering staff put out the right message to folks, and a week later, they're back asking the same thing again. I mean, it kinda gets irritated, because we've answered it, but they're impatient. And I understand their impatience, because we all have that tendency to be impatient about it. The good things are coming, and staff's really working hard at making that happen.
Development is a very complex thing, and it's often difficult to discuss with some folks that don't have, understand some of the basic concepts. But we do wanna make sure that anybody that has concerns can reach out to us. We're happy to sit down and talk with anybody, and talk them through, provide them information, whatever they need, to try and help them understand.
I have one more thing I wanted to bring up that happened, I think I brought this up at the MPO meeting, but not everyone was there. We had an accident on 54 in the last two weeks, where we had a cooking oil spill.
Old trucker, yeah.
A faulty valve shut down 54.
Yep.
And I want to remind you, that's our only east-west road, and it just elevates the importance of getting Rangeland, which is under design right now. Where are we on that?
We're in route study phase, where that segment of it actually were EPL. That's right. That segment were actually, could be eligible for federal funding, so we're kind of taking a different approach to it, because it goes to the expressway. We're doing, we broke the route study into two phases. So we are in the route study phase, and then after that, we move to design, land acquisition, and then eventually construction.
And it makes it eligible for green.
For that trucker, that's the worst thing ever could happen to him, because when that food grade oil is slick, there's no traction for cars, and they just spin, they don't...
That's what was happening.
Until that, that's what happened. My brother's still in that liquid food hauling, and thank goodness, he's never had none of that, so...
But just think of the businesses that were along there, that lost the ability to do business that day.
And it happened actually before Suncoast, so it really made a mess right there.
Yeah, so, yeah, we just, that really shows the importance of Rangeland.
We adjourn.